Okay, Piper, you ready?
Somebody's got their.
Finds me.
Volume. Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the Historic Architects Review Commission, first meeting of the year. January twenty first, five thirty P M. At Rebecca Hall. It is a hybrid meeting. If you are calling in by phone, actually, there's no public whatsoever. So I'm following the instructions. The purpose of Hark is to remind everybody to preserve, maintain and enhance the historic character, scale, architecture integrity and cultural resources of the town and Telluride Historic Landmark District. We'll do the call to order. First of all, we'll recognize from Town Council, Eleanor. Thanks and thanks for your reappointment. You're going to be with us again.
Oh, yeah.
You sure?
And congratulations.
Well, thank you and congratulations.
I did hear that, so it's true.
And from staff, welcome Zoe and Piper. Ally, Kristen, Darren. I don't see any other staff. Anybody else coming? Nope. And we'll do our roll call starting with Sherry.
Sherry Gorley.
Stacy Lake.
Matt Lee.
Mark Shamba.
Bob Mather.
Andrew Williamson.
Elita Mladenova.
Do we have a motion for approval of the twelve seventeen twenty five draft minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, let's vote. Sherry?
Sherry, yes.
A C S.
Matt, yes.
Bob, yes.
Mark is.
Andrew, yes.
Elita, yes.
Six.
Yeah.
We're just all.
Well, actually, approvals, unless we have one short or a recusal, alternates don't won't vote, but but I'm glad they read the minutes. Now I can tell they did. And I was the only one there, so I will approve the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty five minutes as written. Action items. Well, we need the appointment of a Hark member since Kieran was it. And I have a message from Kieran. I saw him on the street a few minutes ago. But who would like to be appointed? They had zero meetings regarding ethics in two thousand twenty five, I understand.
I'll volunteer.
You're gonna, you sure you're gonna go?
I'll go if it happens.
Okay, let, can we vote, Sherry? Well, actually, the member.
We have seven seconds.
All right, and then Stacy, why don't you?
Stacy, yes.
Matt, yes.
Mark, yes.
Bob, yes. Andrew, yes.
You can't vote.
I can't.
I think we need a motion.
I don't think anybody did.
Nobody made a motion. It was just.
Second. All right, I'll make the motion to appoint Bob as the Ethics Commission member and the rest of the.
Second again, yes.
And and the vote has been taken. So congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Taking one for the team. Staff announcements.
I have a number of staff announcements this evening. First, breaking news, just yesterday, an outstanding candidate for Senior Historic Preservation Planner confirmed that he will be joining our team in March. And I will introduce you to him at our March Hark meeting, if not before. I will be submitting an application to the State Historical Fund Grant Program in the upcoming Spring Grant Round, which opens February first with final applications due April first. This is a competitive grant cycle for a general grant for an update to the Telluride Historic and Architectural Survey, last updated in two thousand thirteen. I will also be applying for a certified local government general grant, which is up to twenty five thousand dollars with no match to support historic preservation programs and projects in two thousand twenty six. Applications for that grant program are due on February twentieth. Darren and I will be attending the two thousand twenty six Saving Places Conference on February thirteenth, eleventh to thirteenth. Darren and I will also be participating in a disaster and resilience planning discussion organized by our C L G coordinator as we work towards adoption of the Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code in April. And with a focus on historic structure exemptions, appropriate replacement materials, updating our design guidelines, moving forward, and we will be bringing those items to your attention at an upcoming Hark meeting. We are working, I'm working with Mark, to plan a strategic planning retreat, our annual Hark Retreat in early March. With March fourth and fifth as potential dates, I'll be sending out a poll to Hark members regarding those dates and also preferences for morning, afternoon, or evening. We are also planning, as discussed by Hark previously, a community outreach training program for architects, builders and engineers on historic preservation and design guidelines and all of the matters that that we want to bring forth to the building community in late March. This will be similar to the training we provided to architects, engineers and builders regarding building code updates, and it will be an opportunity to do a deep dive on our design guidelines, answer questions. We will likely do it as a luncheon so that people can informally engage with those who are leading that program. In addition, staff are proposing a late spring or summer historic preservation program for property owners in the Telluride community who own and steward historic structures with speakers from the State Historical Fund and certified local governments. So I've been working to identify those speakers. They are very receptive to coming to Telluride. And this will be a way to build the community of those who are stewarding the most important aspects of our community into the future. So I look forward to providing further updates on that. And anyone who's interested in any of those programming elements, please let me know and I will engage you outside of the Hark meeting and planning as we move forward. So thank you very much.
I have a question. I wonder if we could just take a straw poll on March fourth or the fifth and for our strategic planning. Last year we had at the depot and I, you know, which is an historic landmark building. I think I could get us there for no charge to the town if we could decide when we want to come. Last year, we did a little quick breakfast. We were out there at eleven thirty. But what's better, first of all, my question is, the fourth and fifth?
Let's see.
Is that work for everybody? Just take a quick straw poll and send a bunch of emails. And would you rather, yeah, would you rather do morning or afternoon or what pleases you?
Because you do it the same day as our action.
We don't have a meeting there.
Both days?
You going?
Fourth is better for me in the morning than the afternoon.
Morning, morning fourth going once?
Works for me.
Sure.
Saved a bunch of emails, so there you go.
On the fourth. Okay, second.
So, well, we don't need a motion. We'll, we'll get that arranged and maybe go like eight thirty to eleven thirty and I got a couple of new topics, but it'd be great to follow up on our old ones. Unless you want to stay late tonight and do it, but.
Thank you, Mark. You just made my job easy.
Okay, so with that, oh, the only other announcement was, you know, I listened, I went back and listened to the town Recovery Council meeting, and it was very interesting and a lot of urgency, some great ideas. You know, Kieran had the idea when I saw him in the street that, you know, what we need to do is trade harder on our historic charm and character, which is, as we've seen before, in polls going back twenty five years, is either the number one or number two reason the tourists say they come here. And when I pull people on the chairlift, even if it's a powder day, it's at least fifty fifty.
And you know what the other fifty is?
But so I'm just gonna throw that out there. So we had some councilperson here, our liaison, and and we'll go from there because he had a record December, never before achieved.
Yeah.
What else was there to do? All right, although dog sledding would have been a good option. Okay. Public comment on non-agenda items this evening. We have no public, but I'll just put it out there. I don't know. I guess if anybody has something, raise their hand or go online and raise your hand, and I see nobody. Piper, you see no one, right?
No public, just applicants.
Okay, well, let's move to the work session. We're excited to have Ally Slaton, Assistant Town Attorney, give us an annual update, and I think we'll all find it interesting and worthwhile. And if nothing that much new is reinforcing, then we need, always need reinforcement. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mark. So as a, we've all done this before. I think we only have one new member of Hark that might be new to these kinds of trainings. Typically, we do this during the retreat. However, we saw room on this agenda and the retreats have been getting more and more full, so we decided to give you that time to yourself at the retreat. And instead, we'll do this training, which is really just a review at tonight's meeting. I'm scheduled for an hour. It might take an hour. If you have a lot of questions, it might go a lot quicker. I try to do these pretty informally in the sense that I welcome questions and interjections at any point in time. If there's a specific situation that you anticipate, would like to walk through something you've seen in the last year or two that you'd like to go over again, or any other thing that you might want to talk about more than happy, just stop me at any point in time and we can talk about anything. So again, my name is Ally Slaton. I'm the Assistant Town Attorney. I've been in this role for about five years now. And I sit at almost all of your Hark meetings, if not here in person, then remotely. So very familiar with each and every one of you and this commission, and very happy to be here tonight to present this training. So just a brief discussion overview. This is a roadmap of what we're going to be talking about here for the next hour or so. So we're going to start off with just a refresher of the purpose and role of Hark. I know that all of you know why you're here. However, I think it's really important, even for me, and I learn something every time I go back to the land use code to review this commission. It's important just to go back every now and again and see, well, what does the land use code actually say about this commission? What is your purview? What's not your purview? And the more you go back to it, just as I said, I'll go back to it and read something and discover something new as I'm researching something else. So we'll, we'll take a visit to the land use code tonight to talk about why Hark was created and what you can and can't do. And then we'll jump into a legal and ethics code refresher. That you'll, those of you who have been on Hark for a little while, some of these slides will look very familiar. They've just been rearranged a little bit, but we'll talk about what conflict of interest are, when they might arise, what you do when you think you might have a conflict, and what procedures occur after that conflict has been established. So how you can maybe still participate in a meeting. We'll also talk about ex parte communications. The reason we talk about this so often at the Hark trainings rather than a lot of the other trainings for lower boards and commissions is because you guys, more than any other board or commission, do quasi judicial hearings. So even more so than Town Council, way more so than Planning and Zoning Commission. So ex parte communications, conflict of interest, quasi judicial procedures are the most important for Hark. And then finally, we'll talk about avoiding bias. So first of all, discussing what bias is and then how we can avoid it, both the perception of it and actual bias. And then finally, we'll go through the hearing process review, which is more or less the slide that you have in front of you at every single one of these meetings. So first and foremost, the purpose and role of the Historic and Architectural Review Commission, as we all know, Hark. So Hark plays a role in the preservation process in three main ways. Now, I presented a very similar presentation to P and Z recently, going over many of the same topics, although we discussed in more depth, different topics than this. But the way I presented this to P and Z, I didn't say preservation process. I said development review process. So P and Z is involved to an extent in the development review process. However, Hark more so than P and Z is involved in the preservation process. So there's a lot that happens in the development review process that happens after Hark is involved. So you guys are more or less the first stop because we need to know what a compliant design would look like. But there are many other ways that a project might be stopped in its tracks even after Hark or might need to be re-reviewed by Hark or by staff after it's reviewed for a first time by Hark. So here, I put down the preservation process. Because in the code, there are three main ways that Hark is involved in that preservation process. So first and foremost, it issues Hark certificates of appropriateness. So these are the CAs. That's what you're doing at every single one of these meetings. For the most part, you're lining up an applicant for receipt of a C A. You are providing that feedback to an applicant as to how their design might be compliant with the design guidelines. Each one of these reviews happens through the quasi judicial process. So I think all of you probably know what that process is and what quasi judicial means. We're going to talk about it more later on in this presentation. But that's, that's, as I know, you all know, that's mostly what we're doing here, is issuing those CAs or lining up an applicant to receive a C A. However, there are additional things that Hark does do as part of this preservation process. You also act as an advisory board to Town Council, to P and Z. The code also mentions the Board of Adjustment. I have never met with them before, but there are other boards and commissions which you also act as an advisory board too. So, but however, this always goes back to structures and areas of historic and architectural significance. So anytime we're talking about Hark, we're always talking about these structures and these areas designated on maps of historic or architectural significance. And that is an or in the code, so it's not an and. It could be historical significance or architectural significance. So this is primarily in the form of reviewing and issuing recommendations for amendments to the land use code, which is a legislative process, amendments to the design guidelines. There is a whole slide I'm about to go over with you next that expounds even more upon what these duties are. But this is just an overview of the three main ways in which you participate in the process. Finally, you can recommend designations, and we also maintain inventories for the purpose of preserving and enhancing these structures and areas and their significance to the Telluride Historic Landmark District. So these are the three main duties of Hark. However, again, at these meetings, we're really just focusing on this number one. So the responsibilities continuing of the, of Hark. There is a reference here to land use code, Article nine, Division two. So if you have any questions about how Hark was established, who Hark is, what their purview is, their responsibilities, their duties, all of that can be found in the land use code, Article nine, Division two. Division one is for P and Z. Division two is for Hark. Most duties, and this falls to staff as well, fall in one of these three categories. So there are administrative acts. There are quasi judicial acts and there are legislative acts. And every single one of these bullet points here that you see on this slide. So P and Z only has just a few that are enumerated in the land use code. Hark has a whole list of duties and responsibilities. So I took each one of those duties and responsibilities and placed them under one of these categories. We don't have to read through each one of these, but this will be available in the packet afterwards. So if you ever wanted to go back and have just a highlights of the land use code, you could always look at this presentation. So I'm going to skip most of the administrative acts. If you have any questions about any of these, I'm happy to answer those. But again, what we're mostly focusing on tonight is the quasi judicial and to a smaller extent, the legislative acts. So quasi judicial, again, is issuing those CAs and then recommending designation of structures, significant landmark interiors and areas. But an example of the administrative acts that are specifically in the land use code, you can issue, or you do issue, annual reports. You advise the town manager on appointments to staff. You maintain inventories, apply for public and private funds, advise owners and provide assistance to organizations or persons who desire to protect or enhance historic significance. Those last two bullet points under administrative, I actually didn't know until I was putting this presentation together. So again, every time you go back to the land use code, you might find something you didn't know before. The legislative acts, you can initiate, as we all know, amendments to the text of the land use code. We also do that with the design guidelines for Hark. And we review and provide recommendations on amendments to the text of the land use code proposed by P and Z. So those land use code amendments can come from either P and Z that you get to comment on, or they can come straight from you. So there's many ways that those text amendments can be initiated. Finally, and this is again specifically in the land use code, you can propose new standards and policies. This usually happens through the design guidelines. Any questions so far? Okay, I'll keep moving then. So again, a lot of texts. We're not going to go over each one of these, but this will be a reference for you moving forward. So these are the participant roles. And here is where we talk about each, each person who or each entity that is participating in the quasi judicial process. What are their roles? What you'll notice off the bat, though, is that there are two entities that are missing from here. So we have the commissioners, all of you, you're the decision makers. We have the chair. That's Mark. He's managing the meeting. We have staff. We are the facilitators, so we are facilitating the public hearing. However, missing from this list is the applicant and also the public. So remember that anytime we're talking about the roles of any of these participants, there are other participants as well. Applicant and public are very important to this quasi judicial process. But because I'm not talking to the applicant or the public right now, I really wanted to focus on the roles of these participants. So first of all, the commissioners, that's you, the decision makers. Preparation is key to being an effective heart commissioner, and it starts with knowledge of the design guidelines. I am going to take this opportunity to thank all of you for always being so well prepared for the meetings. That is nothing, I have never had to be concerned about your lack of preparation. So you guys, better than any other board or commission, do a wonderful job of thoroughly reviewing the applications, the packet, the guidelines, and you always come prepared. So thank you for that. It definitely makes our job easier, and I know that it gives a lot of confidence to the public and to applicants to know that you know the standards that apply. But moving on for the commissioners, the decision makers, their role. So the commissioners also prepare by thoroughly, thoroughly, oh, we did that, the packet materials. But for quasi judicial items, preparation does not include doing outside or additional research. So again, we'll get into that later, but that's talking about ex parte communications. So don't talk with the applicant, don't talk with the public, but also don't talk with staff. So you can ask your questions to staff, but please don't expect an answer from staff on those questions about a particular application. Staff will more often than not say, thank you for this feedback. We forwarded it to the applicant. They will respond at the public hearing. So it, there, there will not be a back and forth prior to the hearing about substantive items. Now, if you do have a question about process, those are conversations that we can engage on, especially if it might have something to do with a conflict that will usually come to the legal department. If you have a concern about the sufficiency of an application, staff might be able to address that. Staff might also say that's something that we're going to have to answer at the public meeting. Any questions about commissioner roles? We'll do the chair next.
I guess we have a question. So in reviewing the staff memo, if you see something, maybe they've done the analysis of the land use code and whatnot, and you see something and you're not quite sure whether maybe you would have a different opinion about whether it was land use code compliant or not. Is that something that you would reach out to staff beforehand or?
Absolutely. So anytime you have a concern about the sufficiency of an application, and you're welcome to disagree with staff. So that, don't, don't think that you have to agree with everything that staff puts down on the staff memo. However, again, where you might not get a response to that email or to that communication in the way that you, you want. And what I mean by that is staff can't comment back to you with additional information. What staff can do is receive that comment and provide it to the applicant and say, applicant, we've received this question. Please be prepared to address this at the hearing. So the sooner we can get that feedback from you, the better it is for us so that we might be able to prepare a response to your question, but that response has to be shared with every member of the commission. It can't just be you to your concern privately. It has to be you to your concern in, in the public hearing.
Thank you.
Well, imagine that. Comment that that's why we desire to get our packets as soon as we can so that we have time to do that because, you know, by the time we study this and most people have a day job except me and you that, you know, it might be Tuesday before we're finished with our, well, I don't know, copious notes, all of the plans, et cetera. And there may not be time necessarily to, I mean, no one likes an ambush, but, but there might not be time. So if, if we don't, then we'll bring it up respectfully, and we always have.
Yep, and I, I think that's a really good, good point, Mark, that the sooner the, of course, the sooner you can review it and provide comment ahead of the meeting, the sooner staff and the applicant and to the, a certain extent, even the public could prepare some kind of comment or rebuttal to that concern. When it comes up at the meeting, if you save that comment for the meeting, even though it was available beforehand, you can certainly do that, but you, most likely, that's going to result in a continuance. Because if a question can't be answered at the meeting, and perhaps depending on what the feedback is, it might not be able to be answered even by the applicant on the spot. That just means that the applicant or the application might be pushed for a continuance to the next meeting. So the sooner we can get that feedback, and it has to go through staff, so please don't, I think you all know this, please don't email the applicant with those concerns. Email, email staff. It becomes part of the public record. Staff will forward it to the applicant if we're able. And then the applicant could address it, like I said, on the record. But don't expect us to facilitate a response from applicant ahead of the meeting because that would be ex parte.
I'm sure knowing that Bob's on the Ethics Committee, that, that no one here will commit any of those heinous crimes.
And Commissioner Gorley, you also bring up another, in your question, you brought up something else that might be good to talk about here in the, in the public, and that was about land use code compliance. And I know we've had several issues with applications recently that have arguably, maybe, maybe not been land use code compliant. And that comes up at the, at these meetings, and then it might again push a continuance. And I just want to reiterate the point that your purview is the design guidelines, not necessarily the land use code. However, and I want to reiterate this too, a project must be land use code compliant before it can be constructed. So when you see something that you believe might not be land use code compliant, please bring that to staff's attention. Staff will address it. It might not be addressed prior to the item coming up for a public hearing before Hark. Ideally, those items are taken care of because think about the ways those application can go. It gets approved by you, even though it's not technically land use code compliant. They're going to have to come into compliance after the fact, which might render a design change, which means it's, this has to come back to you. So it, it delays the project from being constructed. The applicant doesn't want that. The architect doesn't want that. No one wants that. So we want projects to be land use code compliant before they come up before Hark. That doesn't always happen. But please bring those to our attention, but also realize that you can and should still review projects, even if they are not land use code compliant.
So, sorry, you used the word constructed a number of times. Is, is it constructed or heard? Are we allowed to hear projects that may or may not be?
Yes, so there is a provision, and Kristen might have it in front of her. I've got my PowerPoint up. But there is a provision in the guidelines that talks about complete application and land use code compliance. There is a provision in there, though, that says that the planning director can still send up an application up to Hark for consideration, even if it's not land use code compliant. However, the planning director does need to flag that issue. So in the past, it's been used for fairly minor issues, as it should be. However, some larger items could still be outstanding when it is sent up to Hark for review. Again, it's in no one's interest for that project to be approved, even without even putting the land use code aside, just because that, that increases the likelihood that it's going to come back before Hark, which is, it's not going to call it a waste of time, but it is, that is a better use of your time to review an application, which is land use code compliant, than to review which, one that's not. However, you are still able to review applications that are not land use code compliant.
I agree that we are able to, but it is not a may provision. It is a shall provision, and that is before we hear it. So the way I read it, and I consulted with Kevin after, in 10 years I've had one of these, and now we've had five, one project twice. But with all due respect, I wouldn't bring it up, but since you did, my understanding is that, yes, we are exactly just saying, we are able to hear it. And in fact, checking the record, you'll hear from the last five that even though we had some dissension on the board about hearing it, that my view was, staff has put all the time in here to review it. We've reviewed the packets, the applicants reviewed. In one case, they came from out of town, and I thought the greater good was to go ahead and have it. But my understanding is that we can, if it's not compliance and says shall provision, before it gets to the board, that we can just continue it right then, we don't have to hear it. So we haven't done that because we've been sympathetic, but I think going forward, I'll rely on the board's, you know, vote on that because it's clear now, you know, what our jurisdiction is. So, but thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions about commissioners before we move down to chair? And again, questions can pop up later, and we can address them then, you don't have to ask them now. So the chair, it's the chair's primary responsibility to run an orderly meeting. Mark knows this, Mark has done a very good job of this for the last however many years he's been chair. But he also, he conducts the commission's business in a fair and timely manner. So fair and timely is what we're going to just talk about briefly here. So Mark's job as the chair is to really manage the tone of the applicant, staff, and commission, public hearing communications. Mark, he is tasked with de-escalating as needed and maintaining that respectful environment of communication across the different participating entities. So again, that is the public, that's the applicant, that's you, the commissioners, that's the chair, and that's staff. So Mark's job is to run a fair and timely meeting. He is going to usher you towards a decision. Once all questions have been answered, sometimes things can be a little belabored. I haven't seen you guys do that recently, you've been doing a very good job. If not, you tune in on the fine points, but you don't dwell on them, and it's great. But if you do, and Mark thinks that something's been discussed enough, he can usher you out of that conversation and towards a decision. Something I haven't seen you guys do in a while, which I think is a good thing, but I just want to remind you it is there, you can always deny an application too. So we try not to do that, because that more often than not leads to an appeal. We don't often deny, instead, we continue with conditions, which I commend. I think it makes a better outcome. But do remember that if you do see a project that you just don't think is going to make it and does not comply with the design guidelines, denial is always an option as well.
You know, I want to just say something quickly, I don't want to belabor it, but I was shocked when John Southard is a very talented consultant, okay, in historic preservation. He told us at the training that Bob and I put on in December, he'd been to over 15 different towns, cities, and he paid us a lot of compliments. But he said that, because I asked him, I was curious, because in my 10 years, I don't recall one time ever that we denied. And he said that is used, well, I can't, he didn't put a number on it, but it is used more often than you might think, Mark. But I still think it's a disservice to the community to deny it, unless they're just the third and final time, unless Zoe gives permission for a fourth hearing, and they just won't listen to staff, and which we always encourage, or they won't listen to the board. So I thought that was interesting, and we don't do it.
I have a question on that. If you do deny, what are the applicants, besides an appeal, what are the applicants? What can they do after that? Do they have to?
Come back with a new application.
A new application.
Yep, so they can, if they disagree, yep, if they disagree with the decision, they could just, they could appeal it. If they agree that maybe they were just so far off that a denial was warranted, then they'll come back with a revised application. However, that's how you guys do a phenomenal job of working with applicants through continuances and working with applicants through conversations with staff, of helping them reach that point of approval. So, and I think that that's one very successful thing about this HARC commission, is that you guys work with applicants so extensively. And it's usually reaches, more often than not, reaches a very good outcome. Bob, yes?
If it's denied, and they don't appeal, or they lose an appeal, is it, doesn't it say something like a year, they can't come back for a year?
I believe there is a time consequence, yes.
I recall reading that before, yeah.
It seems so that if the, this commission doesn't typically deny or ever deny applications, that applicants kind of get the feeling like, well, I'll just, you know, keep going at it, you know, until ultimately they're going to approve it. So is that, I mean, have you found that to be sort of the case?
They get three tries, and then the town manager has to prove the fourth.
Right.
But there's none after the fourth, correct? The town manager can't do another?
The town manager can, but the town manager can also, at the recommendation of staff, not allow that as well, so.
Need past four?
We have been passed four, yes. Don't know if she would, but it is possible.
Yeah.
Yes.
And informing that recommendation, and I'll take a step back and explain why there's a limitation on continuances. It's because the applicant has a right to a decision. And a continuance is a let's keep working on this, it's not a decision. So let's say someone just comes in with a ridiculously non-compliant application. Your immediate feedback might be, look, you really need to go back to the drawing board, rather than denying it, because that denial will set them back another year through the development process, rather than just saying, please redesign this and come back. So that might be a continuance. However, after so many continuances, if they are just not getting the point, and you have, you can cite design guidelines that they're not meeting, then you might just, you could either deny at that point, or you could keep continuing if they agree to the continuance. Because a denial starts that one-year period from which they can then submit a new application. So what it comes down to is a right to a decision, and a continuance is not a decision.
And work sessions don't count in that three?
No, so work sessions happen before an application is submitted. Work sessions are very informal. It's an opportunity for you to provide more feedback than you normally would after an application is submitted.
So just to end this, one example, eight years ago, never got built, I don't know if I'll talk about it, but large project, outside billionaire owner, was really smart, and he played us pretty hard in a lot of ways, and which we can talk about as strategic planning is a lesson learned, maybe. But when we got to that last hearing, there were several board members that wanted to deny it. That's the closest I ever saw, eight years ago, that's 2017 or so. And I remember we finally landed on, we're just going to put in the condition and approve it, and if they don't comply, then, you know, they can't build it. However, then they did an in-run to town council. And in that case, testimony, and I've still got a copy of that tape, the town council validated our ruling and actually supported HARC and to a person. And so, anyway, they never built the project, but I don't think the last three items was the reason, you know, setback or something. It was setback on the third floor, is not the reason it didn't get built. But, but that's the quandary, when you get to that precipice, that, you know, I still think it's better to give them the condition at your last meeting that you think will meet the guidelines and approve it rather than deny it. And it's, I mean, that's the power we can exert, and I think it's reasonable. They want to make an in-run, then they can do that, so. Okay.
From a legal strategy standpoint, to a approval with conditions is usually much more defensible than a denial. So I'm not saying, please issue the decision that you think is warranted, but usually we're aiming for an approval with conditions, because we're saying yes and, rather than no. So again, I commend you for all of the work that you do with applicants here at these meetings to get them to an approved project, rather than just saying, no, go back to the drawing board.
It's quite often a lovely experience. Let's go on.
So I'll go over this last one pretty briefly, but, well, I guess last one on the chair, bullet points, is managing public comment. And again, Mark does a very good job of this, but it's just making sure that applicants or that the public isn't going off on a 10-minute, you know, public comment. We hold them to three to five minutes, depending on how much of the public shows up. And then we try to keep them on topic. We usually don't step in until someone has really gone off topic. If someone starts talking about something that might be outside the purview of HARC, but is still, might be relevant to the project, we'll usually let them go. But if someone starts talking about their felony record in Mount Village, then maybe that's something that you have no purview over, and that's something that we might shut down. But again, rarely happens here at HARC. Most people that will appear at 5:30 to 9 o'clock at night usually have a pretty good reason for wanting to be here. So the last point here is for staff, which includes me as legal. We are, again, the facilitators. What I mean by that is we have an applicant, a landowner, an architect, who comes in and says, I need or I want to do this project, here's an application. We facilitate the review of that application to you by reviewing that application for completeness, for compliance, and then getting it scheduled for a public hearing. So we just, we facilitate the review of that application between the applicant and you as the decision makers. That role comes with a whole bunch of other responsibilities. Most staff issues, staff, planning staff, issue staff-level decisions. The planning director can issue code interpretations. We advise on conflicts, that's usually the legal department. Darren and Kristin will prepare staff reports. We draft legislative updates as needed and directed, along with everything else that's listed there. I won't read it all to you, I know you can all read it yourselves. But there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. Please just make sure that if you have concerns over an application, that you put that down in writing to staff, and we will respond as we can, as is appropriate. So these next few slides, this is what most of you have already seen. So I'm definitely not going to read this to you from the code. Again, you can read it yourself, but this is a citation to the definition of a conflict of interest in the ethics code. This is found in the municipal code. So as most of you are probably aware, the municipal code, the land use code is included within the municipal code, but it is a separate document on the website, it lives in a separate place. But if you want to know about the town's ethics code, that lives inside the municipal code, which is separate from the land use code, which is separate from the design guidelines. So there's three different places that you'll look to find your role. However, here, when we're talking about ethics, you'll always be referencing the municipal code. And this is the 2-4-20 is the definition section of the ethics code. And there's quite a bit of regulation that happens in the definition section of our ethics code in particular. But what you really need to take away from this slide is that there are two different kinds of conflict of interest. Those are personal and financial. I'll talk about each one of those a little bit more on the next slide, but we'll just go on into that. So these are the types of conflicts, we're still in the definition section, so living in 2-4-20 of the municipal code. A financial interest might apply to an individual, their spouse, a dependent child of that individual, or anyone with whom the individual has a close personal or business relationship. So if you work with someone who might have a financial interest, if you work for someone who might have a financial interest, you could be married to someone who has a financial interest, have a child who has a financial interest, each one of those would attach to you. Personal interest is not terribly different, it could apply to the individual, so you, or anyone with whom this individual, so you, has a close personal or business relationship with. For the most part, that's the same as what would occur with a financial interest. So what is a financial interest? There's a variety of direct financial interests that are listed in the municipal code. So it could be ownership in a business, creditor in a business, employment relationship. Again, I'm not going to read all of these to you, and then we've been over most of them before. What most people get caught by is ownership or leasehold interest of greater than three years, but the leasehold interest within 75 feet of the subject application, or which is continuous, contiguous, adjacent, or diagonally adjoining a subject property. We do, staff does, we calculate the distance for noticing that we mail out to each property owner based on when an application is received. So we'll look at the map, determine which properties around that subject application need to receive notice. You might receive a notice but not ultimately have a conflict. But if you do receive that notice, that should flag in your mind that there might be a conflict present. If you get that notice, please feel free to reach out to staff and ask for clarification on where your property might lie with respect to that application, how it's calculated, and whether you actually do have a conflict due to proximity. That proximity conflict, again, could be a financial interest or a personal interest, depending on what your interest is in that property. So, but it all starts with doing that distance calculation, and then we'll follow up with questions as needed to determine what kind of conflict it is. We'll get into why that's important on the next slide. So personal interest is, again, very similar, within 75 feet of property, which is continuous, adjacent, or diagonally adjoining to the subject application. Personal interest is a little bit broader than the financial interest definition. 75 feet is still the rule, but the property to which it attaches is broader. So it's not 75 feet just from with the, the subject property, but 75 feet within property touching that subject property. So the personal interest does apply broader than the financial interest, even though they both say 75 feet. That's something also that's important to know. Again, if you think that either one of these might apply to you in any situation, please just reach out to staff, and we can make that clarification for you.
And you don't count the street?
We do not count streets, so right-of-way's, and I believe water bodies are also not counted.
We went through that on a previous project where our condo is, it's about 75 feet away, but if you take out the river and the river trail, it's next door to each other.
So again, I'm not going to read through this for you, but you will have it for future reference. And this is still in the definition section of the ethics code, which is in the municipal code. Here are the steps for what to do, and there's step zero through step three if you think you have a conflict. So step zero, always, 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 please contact the legal department for an analysis. We can help you determine whether or not you actually do have a conflict. If you have a conflict and you don't disclose it, you're the one that gets in trouble for that. And I think that's, it can ultimately attach to the town, it can ultimately, of course, render an application, it needs to be re-reviewed. There are many things that can happen in the interim that would involve a lot of different staff members and a lot of your time. But it's in your best interest that even if you think there's a small possibility that you might have a conflict of interest, to go ahead and contact the legal department. And all we'll do is help you determine whether a conflict might exist, does definitely exist, or definitely does not exist. And then that's where we'll get you into step one. So if you think that you have an actual conflict, after consulting with the legal department, you will need to notify the chairperson of your board or commission. So now you would need to notify Mark. That just gives Mark a heads up that when that item is called, we're going to need to have a brief discussion and a recusal during that meeting. So, which brings us to step two. So declare the existence of the conflict at the public meeting once the application has been called. That way, we place the conflict on the record. So details aren't necessary, but the premise for the conflict should be declared. So it's not just, I have a conflict, I'll see you guys later. It's, I work for the applicant, I am married to the applicant, I live next door to the applicant. Whatever your reason might be for needing to recuse yourself, it should be stated on the record just very concisely. Details are not needed, but just a broad reason why you are conflicted is a good idea to place on the record. This is very, it happens very rarely, but you can be challenged either for disclosing a conflict that you think exists that the rest of the board or even one member thinks does not exist, in which case they're trying to force your participation in the project. Let's just say it's a project that is very contentious in the community, and you just don't want to make a decision on it. You can't just claim a conflict and say, I don't want to make a decision. So if you claim a conflict, be ready to justify what that conflict is. More often than not, it's someone who actually has a conflict, who wants to participate. And the rest of the board might say, no, actually, we're going to exclude you from this. That's where a challenge you That's where a challenge usually occurs. It can happen the other way, though. We can force participation if a conflict actually does not exist, but you think one does. Mark, I see a little bit of question in your eyes. Do you have?
I answered it.
Okay. So that's, that's step two. Again, I, I don't, that situation's never occurred to my knowledge, especially here in a small town, when we, most people want to participate rather than step back. But it theoretically could come up, and the same process would be followed. So step three, after you have declared.
I can think of a couple of times when I thought maybe perhaps there was a conflict. The board discussed it. I don't remember, we held a formal voter, it was just a straw poll. And I stayed on.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is real healthy, I think, because.
But that's the reverse of the inverse of.
Yes, it could be. And I think in, in those situations, Stacy, that you're describing, it was more, you wanted confirmation that they were okay with you continuing to participate, rather than arguing your case, no, I have a conflict, I don't want to be here, I don't want to be deciding. Yeah.
Age old question is, you know, I understand architectural firms, but let's say real estate firms, and Andrew is recused here and there. But I always felt that, you know, if there's 30 realtors in some firm, and, and, well, let's use Andrew by example, and he's not the person representing this project, that I would have no problem, I don't think it would be a conflict of interest. I mean, maybe there's some pooling of earnings in the firm, I don't know. But what would you say about that?
So I think, and it's a really good question, Mark, because what it brings up is the, again, conflicts, whether one exists or not, the applicant and the public has, and we'll get to this here in a little bit too, maybe I need to reorder the slides next time, a due process interest and having an impartial decision maker. So in that situation, Mark, it's hard to give you an answer, other than to let you know what the process should look like. Because in that situation, maybe the applicant is okay with Andrew participating, but maybe the public isn't. And while that conversation is going on, is there a conflict that exists here? The applicant and the public and other board members could ask questions to Andrew and his employer about, well, what does the separation look like here? Is there, are there any safeguards in place? Will any of his compensation come from this potential project or sale? And explain, explain why he is insulated from the outcome of this project with respect to his employment, to allow him to be impartial. So it opens the door, just even bringing up the issue, I might have a conflict, opens the door for that process to occur publicly, those questions to be asked. And then ultimately, once you hear the answers, maybe the employer says, well, he's not marketing the project, but, you know, ultimately, if it sells and we get a $30 million, you know, income from this, he'll get a cut of that. In which case, maybe there is, you know, a, a conflict of interest present. But if they have other safeguards in place to make sure that there is nothing that occurs on that project that might ultimately affect Andrew's financial position, the answer very well could be, there is no conflict. But all of that starts with a conversation that occurs between you, the public, and the applicant.
Thank you, good job.
So step three, let's say we are all in agreement that you do have an actual conflict. What you'll be asked to do, and I think pretty much all of you had to, have had to do this at one point or another, this has not changed. You'll need to physically leave the room. Usually that means just going into the green room, but if you live close and you want to go home and just listen via Zoom, you're more than welcome to do that too. Just make sure that your camera is off. So you, you are prohibited from participating in the deliberations. That doesn't mean you can't still know what's going on in this room. All it means is that you can't influence the remaining people that are sitting up here. So you can't give, in a lot of cases, you can't give public comment. You can't appear in the room, you can't be sitting in the back making faces or giving hand signals. You need to be fully away, so that way the remaining members here can be impartial without your influence. However, and this has come up several times, if your conflict includes a financial conflict, or if you are an interested party, and it's not only a personal conflict, you can still submit written comment. So there are still ways to be heard, even if you are recused from being a decision maker on an item. That doesn't mean that your voice can't be heard, it just means that it has to be heard in a different way. Also, sometimes what comes up, and is very important to remember, let's say Mark is recused from an item. Mark's wife is not recused from presenting a public comment. However, what she should not be doing is saying, I'm submitting this comment on behalf of Mark, if Mark does not have the right to submit written public comment. So she can give her own opinions, but she can't give her, Mark's opinions through her voice. So, and again, if you find yourself in that situation, I'm more than happy to walk you through, first of all, what the conflict is, and then second of all, what your involvement could still be in a project, even if you can't be in the room. Any questions there? Okay.
Sorry, I thought we were gonna keep going. The four in one year, is that per calendar? Or is it cumulative?
I think it's per calendar year, but Kristen, do you know, how, how do you report that?
Your fresh start.
Yeah.
In terms of where the break is.
Yeah, if you want to look that up, I'll continue on, and then we can, we can circle back to it.
It's not a big deal, but.
Yeah.
I think it's calendar, but.
It's calendar year.
Calendar.
Yep.
Okay, good enough.
So, and this is just for a comprehensive understanding about how all this kind of works together, but how do recusals affect voting? So if there is a certain affirmative number of votes required, this is often, comes into place for HARC specifically, when we're talking about demolitions. The number of votes needed decreases by the number of disqualifications. So let's say something requires four votes in order to pass. And remember, HARC consists of five members plus two alternates, so three is a quorum. If something requires four members to vote in favor, that could be reduced to three if four, if the fourth was recused. So it's a bit of a numbers game, a bit of a math game. And again, this is why it's, it's important for you, as soon as you believe that a conflict might exist, to come forward to staff, because it's a lot better for us to work through that a day or two, or a week or two before the meeting, than to work through it when you recuse yourself on the spot, that we didn't know you were going to do during the public hearing. So the sooner we know about this, the sooner we can walk through the different scenarios to make sure that an item can be heard. Because in some situations, and I believe we almost had this very recently, if the body is reduced to two or more members due to either absences or recusals, the item will need to be elevated to town council or continued to the next hearing, kind of depending on why there's not enough members present. And it, it could happen, especially with larger projects. Let's say, we've got seven people here, but let's say five have to recuse. And we know that even if everyone was present, there's still only two that could hear the item. The reason that provision exists is again, an applicant has a due process right to have an impartial decision maker, which it's, it's kind of, it's inherent in there that there are enough decision makers to make an informed decision after discussion. Two people might not be quite enough in order to have enough voices considering that application. So if there's not enough people here that could consider the application, we'll send it up to town council. Recently, we had this come up, but it was due to absences. So HARC was still the appropriate body to hear the application, we just couldn't do it on that particular date. So we talked with the applicant, and it was gonna be, it couldn't be heard that night regardless. So you might as well just do a continuance and let it be heard at the next meeting, rather than sending it up to town council. So, but it's important to remember, this two or less will be sent up to town council, if it's due to recusals. Any questions here? Yep, Kristen.
Code section, so it's the municipal code section two, four, 100, which is practice before boards and commissions. I can send you the whole section for reference, along with Ally's presentation slides, but the provision is no more than four. Separate development applications are presented by any member in any one calendar year or in any year during the official's term of office. This restriction shall only pertain to development applications classified as large-scale activities. And I can send that out, just so you have that reference.
Fine, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so I, I think I'll probably go through the next couple of slides pretty quickly too, and just let you ask questions on where you might have questions. You, you are all pretty well versed in what this is and what it all means. But there's quasi judicial actions, and we already went through that briefly. That's all of the public hearing items that we have here monthly. But there's also legislative actions that HARC can and does perform. Those usually relate to just changes to either the design guidelines or to the land use code. There's much more deference that's given to legislative actions than there is for quasi judicial. What is important to remember for quasi judicial is that you are essentially a judge. And judges are expected to be impartial, they're expected to follow the rules in front of them. They're not expected to say, or not desire to say, I think, I think, I think, but rather to cite to different rules, cite to the provisions that are governing the application and leading towards the outcome that is warranted through the information provided in that application and the evidence presented to the judge at the meeting. Evidence could be presented by the public, by the applicant, or by staff. Evidence cannot and should not be presented to you on an individual basis outside of the meeting, which is leading to, well, thought we were gonna get to ex parte communications, but we'll go over these couple of slides next. What prompts quasi judicial review, I already went through this. There is a due process interest of applicants. Applicants are entitled to notice of a hearing, the staff does that, but also a meaningful opportunity to be heard during the consideration of a matter by an impartial decision maker. So this is a constitutional due process right that an applicant has. We, our staff is constantly weighing these rights and protecting these rights against presenting a full application and information before HARC commission. So we are doing our best to walk that line between making sure that an applicant has this due process review, while also making sure you have all information that you think is warranted to render an informed decision. And this slide is, is also a slide that's been in my presentation for a while, and I'll go over it very briefly again, you'll, you'll have access to it after the meeting, if you want to read the whole thing. But there is no due process right to a particular outcome. What matters more than the outcome, and the applicant might disagree, but what matters more than the outcome is your process for getting there. So just make sure that how you decide complies with the due process requirements. What you decide is still very important, but how you get there is arguably even more important. So what are ex parte communications? This is something that I usually do like to go over a little bit more with HARC. Again, just because you are doing so many quasi judicial actions here at these meetings, it's important to know, as you're walking down the sidewalk, or going to get your cup of coffee, or shopping at Clark's, what are appropriate conversations that you can have? And how and when should you be telling someone, I'm sorry, I can't discuss this? Please provide an email, or appear at the meeting? Or what should you be telling someone who might be trying to attempt ex parte communications with you? And, and I want to be very clear, I'm not blaming anyone on this commission, and I'm definitely not blaming the public either. People want to talk about their concerns, and they might not realize either that it's inappropriate to be heard in that way. And especially, you guys want to make sure that people are heard as well. But what we need to remember, again, is that the applicant and the rest of the public also have an interest in making sure that they are aware of those concerns and that communication. So it's not about not having someone be heard, it's to make sure they're being heard in the correct way by all of you, rather than just one of you. So ex parte comes from the Latin, on one side only. So what that really means is only one of you, one of the decision makers, is getting information. Because if someone's stopping you at Clark's and telling you how much they don't like this project that you're going to be hearing next week, the rest of you are not hearing those concerns. The applicant is not hearing those concerns. So you're getting information that other people are not privy to. That's what makes it impermissible. So again, it's not the information itself, it's how it's being received. Ex parte contacts are strictly prohibited when the contact concerns a specific land use application that's subject to a quasi judicial hearing or meeting process. So if someone is approaching you saying, I don't like this land use code amendment that you guys just passed, or this land use code amendment that you are going to be considering next week, I disagree with it, or I love it. That's fine, because that's legislative, so you can consider those comments. But if someone comes up to you and says, I really disagree with the design of this new project on the valley floor, that's not going to be okay, because that is an application that is subject to the quasi judicial process. So think about an application that, think about an individual applicant who might be up here, and if they would want to hear what you are receiving, you should probably tell that person, I'm sorry, I want to hear you. Please submit comment to the clerks, please submit comment to staff, or please appear at the meeting and give that public comment, but I just can't have this conversation with you here. I've given you several examples, as we, as well as in parentheses, what we would expect, why, why that example would be inappropriate. So conversations with an applicant or a potential applicant outside of a public meeting, that's the purpose of a work session. So if someone says, I've got this great idea for a new McDonald's on the valley floor, that's where, that's where you say, great, submit the application, I'll talk about it with you in a work session. So again, there's, there's a way for each one of these comments to be heard. It just might not necessarily be in the way that they want to give it. I'll briefly touch on the, the couple of last ones, passing a note between two members during a public hearing. I don't think we do much of that anymore, but instant messaging. So most of you will have computers in front of you, you have cell phones. You should not be messaging with members of the public during a public hearing, and they're texting you saying, oh, well, don't you remember, or please consider, you know, whatever their comment might be. Again, it's not that they can't do that, it's that they need to appear, so all of you are getting the information. And it looks bad when, say, let's say Alisa gets a text message from her neighbor saying, have you guys considered this in the middle of a public hearing? And she says, oh, wait, I just got a text message from so and so, they want us to consider this. Well, now all the information's out there, that's great, but it also calls into question whether she's received additional communications via that means. So there are ways to cure ex parte communications. Just please be aware of the perception of what those communications could still elicit, even if you went ahead and cured it. So what, what that entails, though, what that, that means for next time as well, she disclosed that one, but we don't know if she has more. A better, a better process to follow is just to have a policy yourself of saying, look, I've got all these friends, they're all very interested in the community, but I have told every single one of them, do not text me about applications. So if you set that policy yourself and communicate it to people who have your number or your email, then it, it forecloses that possibility.
Does that apply to family members?
Yes. So any, anyone who is not a decision maker, yes. So even if Angela has comments about something, especially if Angela has comments about something, because she's also on P and Z, Angela would just need to appear to give that public comment. She shouldn't be discussing it with you off the record. Yep.
We try very hard.
So I think I've, I've probably already talked about all of these, what's wrong with ex parte communications. Again, it's all about fairness. And we often think about fairness of the applicant, but I think it's also really important to remember that there's also fairness to the public, to citizens, and then to a certain extent, also staff. Because staff, we're usually aware of what general concerns might be with an application. But, you know, if, if you're a neighbor, or if you live closer to an applicant, to a subject property, you might know more history that maybe we don't know. So, and that, that we should be made aware of. And again, it's not that that information can't get out there, it's the way in which it's delivered. And it needs to be delivered to everyone at the same time for consideration. I won't go over this example again, I think most of you have heard it several times. I've talked about this case, and I think at every training I've given in the last five years, what it, what it really all comes down to is that even the appearance of ex parte, and I don't know why that is not, yeah, something's going on with our screen in the room. But it, just the appearance of ex parte communications can still have pretty severe consequences on the public hearing process. So even, again, going back to the example I used Alisa for without her permission, even if she did cure that one text message that she received, there's still going to be a question in the minds of, of the public, and probably even the applicant, well, what other communications has she received? So definitely try to disclose those ex parte communications when they do happen, but make sure that you're following those up with the individual who contacted you to say, look, I, I want to hear your, your concerns, the whole board does, but it can't happen like this. I need you to submit written public comment, I need you to record your comment, or I need you to appear at the meeting. Just know that you can't talk to me individually at Clark's. This is the last, second to last slide. So the hearing procedure, this is the variation of the slide that's put up between. that's put up before all of your public hearing items. And I just wanted to highlight a few points for you here. So the chair, as usual, will just introduce the project. Recusals occur after the project has been introduced. So we're reviewing 123 Spruce Avenue, and Sherry needs to recuse herself. So she'll just say on the record, I have a conflict of interest. It is a personal conflict due to this reason. And then she will leave the room. Staff will then give their presentation and answer questions. The applicant gives their presentation and answers questions, where they're usually 30 minutes or less each one of these presentations, but kind of depending on the complexity of the project, we might flex that to more or less. After both of the presentations have been given, we'll then open for public comment. That's usually three to five minutes, kind of again, depending on the complexity of the project. Dialogue between the public applicants and the commission members is not permitted. However, sometimes we do, we allow the applicant a time to rebut during those public comments that are received. Staff may as well. So the public comment, once that period ends, the public hearing is closed. So a lot of people think is the public hearing process is the whole thing. So it's not, the public hearing process isn't over until a motion's been made. That's not true. The public hearing portion of this process ends once the public comment has ended. After that happens, we enter deliberations. Deliberations is not permissible during that period of time to have interactions with staff other than legal counsel, justice process, with the applicants or with the public. We oftentimes have members of the public who are like, well, I have a comment here. And they'll try to raise their hand and give an additional public comment. And Mark does a great job of saying, no, your time for that has passed. Now, what we can do is we can reopen the public hearing if additional items have been discussed, which were not part of the presentations or things that you might want feedback on, or if you have discussed things that you think the applicant or the public or staff might want to comment on further. So the public hearing can always be reopened after deliberations, and then we can have deliberations again after that before a motion is made. But while you're in deliberations, there can't be any back and forth. Ultimately, though, the commission will vote on an application. And remember, that could be denial. It could be a continuance with or without conditions, or it could ultimately be an approval. So what can you do before, during, and after a hearing? These are just common pitfalls that we've put here on this slide. So before the meeting, and we already went over this, you should be reading the staff report and preparing in depth for the public hearing process to continue. You can review the criteria of the design guidelines. These are usually pointed out in the staff memos, but please feel free to go through the whole guidelines and review the project yourself. Just make sure that you aren't talking to the applicant or to the public, usually the applicant about concerns or the public about their concerns for a project. Again, those concerns can be voiced. Your questions can be answered. They just can't do so on an individual level. So those concerns need to be presented to staff via email ahead of the meeting. Staff will then send those to the applicant. The applicant can address those concerns at the public hearing, but don't expect a substantive answer to those concerns prior to the public hearing. If it is a concern about process or about conflicts, legal staff might be responding to that concern because it's not something that touches the substance of the application. Rather, it's about the proper procedure for reviewing the application.
Can I ask a quick question on that? So it says, do not do independent research. How does that apply to walking by a site?
So that's why we have site visits. However, this is telluride, and we're all walking around every day. So it might be hard to avoid. If you don't go out of your way to avoid a project, but also maybe don't go by and examine it in depth outside of the public hearing, wait for the site visit. However, those discussions also can't occur at a site visit. So a site visit's very limited into what can be discussed. You take the observations from the site visit and come back to this meeting and discuss them in deliberations.
What if there's no site visit?
Yeah, so you can always request before staff that there is a site visit if you think that there are going to be, if you think it would be warranted for a project. However, I would advise against doing your own site visit unless... So again, some of these things can be cured. So Bob, if you walk by a project and you notice something, don't reach out to the applicant and say, hey, applicant, what's going on here? But you can reach out to staff and say, I noticed this when I did my own site visit. Staff, again, probably will not respond to you substantively other than to just say, we've received this comment. We will ask the applicant to address it at the meeting. At the meeting, I would disclose on the record that you went by the project and you made this observation, and you emailed staff and did not get a response substantively. So again, I would just place on the record any of these out of room observations or conversations. That way, it's just, it's here. We can discuss it. The applicant can discuss it with you. They can rebut it if necessary, and it looks like that we might have a comment to make on this.
I just also want to say, also, don't talk to the people onsite with your complaint, like trying to cure it in that moment through whoever's onsite. Please make sure you're directing it to staff.
Yep. And that's probably after the public hearing also. If you go by and you notice something that's violating a condition that you remember putting on this project, please definitely reach out to staff with that one. We will follow up promptly. But as Zoe said, don't go onsite and talk to the architects or to the people constructing the project. They might not know any better, and they probably won't have any, they can't cure it anyways without additional direction from higher up their chain of command, I'm sure. So bring those concerns to staff, and we will address as appropriate. I don't think I need to, again, read these. You can always read them afterwards and ask me any questions you have. But during the meeting, just make sure you're listening to the applicant and to staff and their presentation, that you are just keeping in mind that you are an impartial decision maker. Place, if you remember, oh, 20 years ago, this happened at this property. I wonder how that impacts this application. Again, it is telluride, small community. You are all experts in this room. You've all been working with these properties and in this town for a while. So you might very well have knowledge that goes beyond what even the applicant or the current property owner has. That's not held against you. Just make sure that whatever you are considering is privy to the rest of the decision makers, to the applicant, and to the public. So we're just trying to make this a fair process. So if you know something that might impact a project, just place it on the record so it can become part of a discussion or challenge by the applicant.
Can I ask another sort of question in that regard? So if, for example, there's a project and it has an addition that was, you know, put on some years ago or something, is it okay, is it considered independent research to maybe try to look through the documents on the document center and try to find information about that addition?
So the only documents you should be reviewing ahead of the meeting are what's been provided to you by staff. So don't do any other research. Now, if you, along those lines, though, let's say you knew there was an addition or you knew that something had occurred in the past and you can't quite remember how it happened or what the plans looked like or what the deal was, that's when it's appropriate to email staff and say, staff, I would like further information about this process and how it's relevant to this current application, if it's been considered. And that's when staff will then reach out to the applicant and say, hey, applicant, this has been identified as a potential issue. Could you please make sure you're prepared to address it at the public hearing? So we can't give you an answer. We can't provide you with the documents unless, let's say, you identify that addition as an issue. We tell the applicant, applicant follows up with us, supplements their application, we will then provide it to all of you. And that maintains the fair process because now you're all getting the same information. But if you're doing your own independent research, even if that independent research, your conclusion is, oh, that actually doesn't impact the application. Well, now, let's say Bob had the same question. You've answered it, but Bob doesn't have the answer. So we want you all to be on the same page. It doesn't, again, it does not mean don't express your concerns. It just means make sure you're expressing them in the right way to the right people so we can make sure that the process is still fair. Okay? And then this last one is a very common question because, again, it is telluride, and we have some members that have spouses on crossboards. To what extent can you participate in P and Z meetings? And to what extent can P and Z participate in your meetings? So especially when we have bigger projects that might be going through dual processes, there's going to be HARC applications and applications that P and Z gets to review, and maybe some applications that are going to have joint review. To what extent can you watch those meetings and participate in those meetings? So the land use code does anticipate this to an extent. It talks about the HARC and P and Z chairs attending each other's meetings when it might be relevant to a project just to relay the decision that was made before their commission. However, if you are not a chair, you should not be participating in those meetings. What we have allowed in the past, and maybe to an extent even encouraged, if you would like to watch those P and Z meetings, you're more than welcome to do so. Again, just please make sure you place on the record when you attend a review of that same project at HARC, that you place on the record that you did attend that P and Z meeting. Now, those are all public record. The applicant was probably sitting in the exact same place for a P and Z meeting as they were for a HARC meeting. So they're going to be aware of what occurred at that meeting. However, what you're doing is placing on the record that say, maybe Sherry, you listened to that meeting, but maybe Stacy didn't. So you might have additional information that Stacy doesn't. The applicant could supplement the rest of the board that didn't attend that meeting with anything that they think might be relevant for HARC's review of HARC's application. So again, it's all about disclosure and making sure that you, at the very least, give the applicant the opportunity to either supplement or to challenge if necessary.
What about giving public comment at a meeting? I guess maybe you wouldn't really need.
Yeah, so we do pretty strongly discourage public comment across commissions, and there's a good reason for that. It's because if you have a public comment, that could be challenged for bias. So if you have, remember, here, you're sitting as a judge, as an impartial decision maker. But if you give a comment before P and Z that says, I totally disagree with this project. I don't think it's needed in town. I don't like the project. I don't like the design. That signals to the applicant that no matter what they present before this commission, you're going to come in biased against it. So hopefully, no one holds those kinds of opinions. But if you do, please, please don't go and make that public with a public comment before another commission. Okay? So last slide. Thank you, guys. I think I hit, yep, about a little under an hour and a half. My information, Kristin's contact information. I believe you both have these. Happy to answer any questions here or after the meeting or any other appointment time. Thank you very much.
Good job, Ally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ally, and thank you, board, for all that you do. I think especially during this time, and I will not point it out, how important it is for HARC to really follow everything that Ally has pointed out and really maintain the scope that you have as this board. So I appreciate you taking this all very seriously and making sure that that's how you proceed with the community. Makes my job a little bit easier, too.
You don't need any more headaches. Okay. Let's have the first public hearing item. Now, for corn residents, it's a continuation from November 19th, 2025. Consideration of an application for a small scale addition to existing buildings. It'll increase the structure's floor by more than 25% or result the building contain more than 1,000 square feet, but less than 2,500 square feet of floor area per land use code 7203A1B3 and small, excuse me, small scale repositioning of a designated THS structure per land use code 7203A3B4, a minor scale alteration of a rated structure that does not increase its floor area by seven, per 7203A3C in substantial scale addition in existing building which will increase the structure's floor by less than 10% per land use code 7203A3D4. It is lot 24A, block 9, West Telluride Accommodations to Replat, ordered 131, 2023 at 479838. Address 566 West Columbia. Historic Residential Zone District Owner David Corn and Kristin Corn and the Family Trust. Applicant Shift Architects, Chris Mappar, and staff member Darren Candelaria. Darren?
All right. Thank you, Chair Shambhav. First, has the commission reviewed the public comment submitted for this application?
Yes.
Thank you. This is for the consideration of a small scale application at 566 West Columbia. This application was previously continued for the November 19th, 2025 HARC meeting. 566 West Columbia is located in the Historic Residential Zone District and Treatment Area within the THLD. This property is located on the south side of West Columbia Avenue. On the property, there is established landscaping and several large cottonwood trees. There are two historic structures on the lot, a primary and secondary, both rated as contributing. The property holds incredible historic significance, displaying an overall high standard of integrity and is individually eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. The project proposes raising the existing historic primary to allow for a basement and new foundation, demolition of the historic primary's front porch and south elevation, including the rear extension, new construction of a two-story addition to the primary and alteration to the secondary to allow for enclosed parking. Previous condition number one was to significantly revise the proposed addition by reducing height and width as well as revise the connector to be subordinate to the historic structures. There have been a few significant changes to the proposed addition. The most notable is the change of the roof. There has also been a reduction in height and width. However, staff still have concerns about the compatibility of the proposed addition and the loss of historic materials and recommend further revisions. Therefore, this condition has been modified and retained. Condition number two was to provide a detailed preservation plan, maximizing retention and avoiding removal where possible. A draft preservation plan has been provided as well as a demolition and rehabilitation drawings. Removal, reconstruction, replacement, and replication of the existing historic materials, including, but not limited to, siding, windows, and the chimney are proposed. Replacement materials are in kind. However, the focus of a rehabilitation plan for contributing structures should be on protection, maintenance, and repair, with the majority of the building's structural systems and materials dating from the period of significance. Therefore, this condition has been modified and retained. Condition number four was to provide a detailed conditions report on the restoration and repair of the wood siding. As part of the submitted preservation plan, a brief conditions description was provided for the wood siding. Careful removal of the siding is proposed, followed by cleaning, sanding, and finally sealing and painting. Staff are concerned with the proposed removal of the siding as this will inevitably cause greater loss of historic material. Therefore, this condition has been modified and retained. Condition number five was for the repair and restoration of the historic windows. Further clarification is needed from the applicant on what is proposed to be repaired or replaced. Therefore, this condition has been modified and retained. Finally, condition number three was to provide evidence on what the northern and southern facades looked like historically. Condition number three has been met with historic images provided. Condition number six was to reduce the number of additional doors and openings added to the historic structure. This condition has been met with the elimination of the proposed door to the primary structure. Condition number seven was to eliminate the dormer and connection to the primary structure from the alley structure. The proposed dormer and connection to the primary structure have been eliminated. Staff still have concerns about how the proposed additions to the primary and secondary structures reduce the setback between the two structures, which is a requested modification from HARC. HARC should discuss if this condition has been met. Condition number eight was to preserve the two westernmost cottonwood trees subject to an arborist review. All existing established cottonwood trees are proposed to be removed. An arborist letter was provided summarizing the health of all the cottonwoods. Besides the adverse effects of construction and large limbs, Besides the adverse effects of construction and large limbs, the two westernmost cottonwoods can be saved. Therefore, this condition has been modified and retained. Condition number nine was to add vertical emphasis to the windows on the southern facade. Though there was a slight change to the windows, there is still a strong horizontal emphasis. This condition has been retained. Conditions numbers ten through thirteen have been met with the revisions to the proposed lighting, addition of bicycle parking and more information provided such as a site drainage plan and three D images. Oops, I'm going back. Staff recommendation. Several of the previous conditions have been met. However, conditions related to the proposed addition and connector, as well as the proper rehabilitation of the structures remain. This site holds a substantial amount of integrity and with this, there's a lot at stake and greater sensitivity is needed for proper preservation and rehabilitation of the structures. Therefore, staff recommends continuing the application. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
In your comments, you mentioned preserving two trees? Or I think in your, in your motion or condition number five, preserve the westernmost tree.
Yes, the, I was mentioning the arborist review, which stated that the two westernmost trees can be preserved from my own staff recommendation. Based on the arborist review, the healthiest one is the furthest westernmost tree. So that is why I'm recommending that one be saved.
Okay, but the other one.
Has the potential to be saved as well.
But it's not mentioned.
I, it would have more, there more work would be needed to save the tree and so I'm recommending just the one be saved.
Okay. I just want to clarify that.
Sure.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Is that westernmost one, the one that's also closest to the street?
I believe so. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question, yes. In reading the report, on page fifty-four from the packet, roof, the existing corrugated roof should be replaced with a standing seam metal roof. I'm puzzled by this. And this is, this is a report that Shift Architects have submitted. I'm puzzled about replacing the existing roof specifically with standing, standing seam. And I was wondering what, what staff thinks about this and have you guys, it, it, to me, makes sense to actually keep it at least corrugated if the existing corrugated metal roof has not been, is not in a good condition to be, to be saved. And this is, we can deliberate later. I was just wondering why this was not brought up.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to provide some background on my process in reviewing this. I, based on other projects that we have reviewed as well as just the historic material, roofs are often replaced significantly, like of, more often than not. We have allowed standing seam on other historic structures. My thought process was that this roof is not as historic as some of the other material on this building. And therefore, I'm not completely sure if corrugated is the historic material. So I would allow a different.
Could you go to the historic photo? I don't know if we'll be able to tell anything but from it, but it might shed some light.
Usually it's wood shake.
Wood shake.
So my thought process is this is not a historic material and therefore can be replaced.
Was there any thought given to, the guideline talks about corrugated being suitable for secondary structures? And here we're talking about a primary.
Where the corrugated is not proposed for the primary.
Oh, sorry. I, are, another way, are you saying?
Got it, got it, got it.
Standing seam is obviously not historic, so you're just letting it express this is not the historic root material. This is a new replacement root.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Hey, thanks.
And actually, one more note in regards to the trees and the condition. Is it possible to ask for, I mean, I understand that it's a, it, it's part of the feeling of the site is provided because of those big trees. And maybe they could be replaced, let's say with spruce trees, which would be also large and not cottonwoods, which would be problematic. And going back to the historical photos, you see all these spruce trees around and no cottonwoods. That was just a thought and a question again for staff, like has, has this been considered?
Sure, I, I think that could definitely be a possibility. I was following the design guidelines and preserving what is current. But I do believe there's another one that talks about different remediations for
Okay.
removal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very detailed. Thank you, Darren.
We're talking about trees, just let me.
Go ahead.
It talks about the, the report, the arborist's report talks about a spruce tree, but I didn't see it on the site plan.
I believe the spruce tree that he was referencing is on the neighboring property. That was my understanding.
It looked like a problem. Okay.
Okay, well, let's hear from the applicant. Chris, if you want to introduce yourself and the project. Thanks, Darren.
Hey there, Chris Papar, Shift Architects. I have David Corn and Kristen Corn with me along with John Miller. I am going to touch base on a couple items. Thank you, Darren. I think we've met most, the majority of the conditions. Can you guys see my screen?
It's trying, thing up.
The, yep. So I, let's just talk about these trees for a second. This is the four trees in question. These are the two western trees. And just to be clear, Bob, this is on Fortenberry's property here. This tree here is the one that's recommended to be saved. And as you know from Cory's letter, these have been nothing but a problem for the last couple decades. I'm try, oh, sorry. So here, I'm gonna share. Why isn't that working? Can you see the tree laying down? No.
No.
Sorry, give me a second here. This is what we're getting in the, the windstorms. This tree, this huge branch has fallen off of that most westernly tree up front. And the reason I do think that that tree can be removed is because that spruce tree does kind of impact our site and help with the visual aspect of the addition. And to Eliza's question, I do think providing additional trees of a spruce, which is more native to our forest, unlike the cotton trees. Okay.
Hey, Chris, it's Dave Corn, too. Can I just reinforce a point that you're making while you're switching?
Yep, sorry, getting over to the three D.
No, I, I think one of the, one of the points is the tree that we're discussing saving is the tree that most recently had a large branch fall down and that was what was pictured in Chris's last image. Yeah, my, my reading in the arborist's letter, you know, obviously it discussed various extent of, you know, health of the trees, but overall recommendation I thought in the arborist's letter was that it would be better to remove, you know, the tree that we are discussing retaining. You know, both from the safety and long-term health, you know, I think are in question. And then given the fact that we have seen large branches come down, you know, just raises some concern, I think. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Nope, you're good. Thank you. All right, now I just want to talk about the mass and scale and the connector. We are, our connector back here, which is not seen from anywhere at the pedestrian level, is two stories. And just to remind you guys that this is a fourteen-foot wide structure with a five-foot-six plate, right? So almost impossible to even get a staircase in here. The one currently comes up to like a four-foot-eight head height. So it, it's just very difficult to get around this small and very narrow structure. I do think the best solution for this property is to have the addition all the way off the back and not interrupting all three sides of the structure. That we are removing a small shed roof in the back, which takes off more than fifty percent of the siding that doesn't even exist today and is not seen from anywhere. This house here, over here is historic. This addition is much larger with no connector. And my property in five fifty-seven also has no connector. But all of the solutions were put on the back of the historical structure. The addition on the back house, so this is the historical portion here of the secondary structure. This exists today. And our addition is this little shed left back here just to get the depth for an enclosed parking. And then obviously our addition here. So this was lowered a foot. It is now about ten inches lower than the historic and the connector is a little bit more than that. It was requested, for those of you who weren't here, to put in their very general massing for the neighbor, neighboring properties, just so that we can see. And then the three conditions regarding the rehabilitation. Hold on, I'm just trying to get to the existing photos. And so I'm, we're okay with the conditions on the rehabilitation. We would like it, let me reduce this so it moves a little faster, to work with staff on each individual process prior to building permit. Whoops. Sorry. Oops, I went the wrong way. Sorry, guys. I'm having a mouse issue here. In regards to the rehabilitation, we met with both Kristen and Darren on site. Ah, here we go. Hard to tell really in these, this, for example, this is the west elevation. This is bowed. Probably out twelve inches in the center here. So I, I think the condition should be revised to work with staff as we get into this project. Maybe it's noted before we move the house, it will have to be moved off the property for its foundation. And so I think we're happy to work with staff on each individual window. During our site visit, it was, I thought concluded that nothing was savable regarding the windows, so we have a replacement in kind suggested. And then the siding is almost down to be considered by each piece. And I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Did you discuss the reduction in the size of the addition if that took place?
Yep, let me, yes.
That's height and width.
So we did height and width, and we changed the roof form to simplify it from the streetscape.
The, how many feet, Bob's asking?
Eighteen inches from the west, we reduced the back. And then we came down almost twelve inches, making it lower than the historic.
I looked at the numbers on the, the peak of the addition and the peak of the existing house and the difference was, I believe, point zero eight inches.
Now lower. Lower now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just slightly down.
But only two feet off the width, did you say?
Eighteen inches.
Or eighteen inches?
Eighteen inches.
Off each end, each, east and west or?
Nope, just the west side.
Off west. Okay. And how long is that two-story connector? I should have looked on the land view, yes. Staff has, have been recommending one story. Kristy?
What was your question?
How long the connector was?
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
Five foot eight. Okay, thanks, Bob.
Yeah, the connector only, yes.
Any other questions? What's on that? Okay, okay, so the second floor of that connector is connecting bedrooms or something?
Yeah, the living, living space.
Or the living space up there.
It's, no, it's connecting the living space upstairs.
Okay, any other questions? Not?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On the secondary structure, there's the proposed new door. And then right below that new door is the window well for the lower level. Yes, my question is how, how is that possible to have the window well right underneath the door entry? I'm sure there's some architectural trick, maybe.
Yeah. What was your question regarding the window well?
Yeah, how do you do the window well right below the door opening?
Easy with a great.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Now we'll hear from the public. Any public comment? If you're out there electronically, you want to comment on this project, raise your hand now, please. And I'm not seeing any. So we'll end that and come back to the board. I have one question, the board, before we comment on one through six, and that is I, I have my notes from the last meeting here about the fifteen-foot requirement between the primary and secondary structures. And we have, and, and it's not a condition. Did we, did we say, okay? What are we saying? Okay, six foot nine?
I don't think so. I think there were so many changes that they thought they needed to make that. I don't, I don't recall it being discussed.
Okay, well, how are we today? Since staff said we should discuss it.
Looks pretty close. That's not my primary issue with this project. Think I could be okay with what's proposed as far as separations. I think that the scale from the alley steps back enough. And there's, you can tell there's separate structures, you can tell there's open space in between.
Straw pull. I mean, we've, we've relented on this before. Straw pull, everybody okay with where it is? So we can get to the, as Matt said.
I'll go real quick. First of all, I missed an November meeting. I missed, I didn't hear this previously. I was at the medical center that afternoon, didn't feel like I should come share. That with you all. But at any rate, in reviewing at this time, I was initially very. Keen on, on that separation and how close it was. But in this case, given the extreme, extreme, I don't know if I use that word. Given the, the narrowness of the historic structure, the amount of open space or lot coverage that that. Bides to Columbia. It's, it's a, it's a byproduct of that. Existing condition. So to be, to be, to have to maintain that open space by preserving what I, what I guess is the east. Elevation, which is what we want from a preservation standpoint, the, the. Consequence, let's say, is that the more of the open space is taken up between the structures that it. It's a result of, and I'm so that, so I'm, that's how I rationalized it as I reviewed.
It's a smaller house setback.
Yeah, and it's in the middle of the, middle of the lot. Yeah. And I don't know if those are things that were discussed last time, but that's. What I've taken this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question about that. On the upper level, they do have that deck that protrude on the south. Coming off the south facade of the addition that does protrude into. Into that six foot nine separation. And I think H R thirteen C, it says decks, balconies, patios and porches should not significantly encroach into front, rear and side yard setbacks, which. The middle yard is not necessarily that, but presumably that could be sort of extrapolated out to say also it should not protrude into. Sort of that separation between buildings.
The, the depth of the deck is seven six. I can see that on the, on the plan. I mean, I suppose we could ask for that to be reduced to six six or something, some amount. I'm a little bit more concerned with the proximity between the his, the shed roof, the sh, the shed. Roof of the shed. And the, the DAC right at gridline C. They, they don't touch in space, but they touch in plan. They're very, very close. So, forgive me if this is a reduction or a condition from, from before, but I think.
There was a stair there before.
Okay. At the upper level, yeah. I think it's within, I think it, it would help. Comply more with the guidelines if that deck was reduced. Enough to not, we're, we're already struggling with the, with the closeness. And like you said, that deck really. Really makes it close. Touching in plan even.
Okay. So we'll go around room one through six, say if you agree and. Got the impression that we're probably okay with the distance on the primary, secondary, but. One through six and any other conditions, and you don't have to read each one, but I think we really need to, as Matt was kind of leading into. Number one, and particularly number one is the question of, I'd like to hear from all of you. Think they're there yet? Want to start, Matt?
I can jump in. So I, I agree with all. Of Darren's conditions. I agree with trying to save that northwest. Cottonwood, I think it can be limbed up if there's issues. I, the thing I want to bring up is my. Primary concern about this project is the connector. And I want to point out on. Policy RE nineteen. B five. Before the guideline rewrite, that policy said a small connector linking the historic building in addition should be considered. In the recent guideline rewrite, we expanded upon that to say preserve open space in it, sorry, to preserve open space in historic materials, a below-grade connector. To a new addition is preferred. If below-grade connector is not possible, a small one-story connector linking the historic building in the addition should be considered. So. Thinking back on those discussions, tightened up that language, specifically to discourage two-story connectors in most scenarios. So. What I'm struggling with is should this be a one-story connector? Or if. It's continued to reduce further. So I think right now it stepped in a foot on each side. So if it stepped in two feet on each side, and maybe the. The roof is brought down. If you can't perceive it from the street being there. Would, would we allow that? That's kind of my primary concern with this project. I think. The addition's simple. I think the massing is, is simple. Chris has reduced its size, reduced its presence. I think the deck on the back, we could. Debate if it needs shrink or get smaller. I think it provides a little articulation. I think it steps down to. The historic alley structure. I don't mind that it's about seven feet hard. For me, it's primarily the connector that I'm concerned with.
Had the similar thought when I looked at this, that. I don't. Given the size of the house, the original house, I don't know where you could. Put stuff. To make it a one-story connector. And so I think possibly bringing it in. And lowering it, I, I had the same thoughts. And I think if it comes out, you, you don't see much of it. But I think that would help maybe change a material. So it does. Read as a link, and we've done that a lot where. Link might be, you know, another material, metal or something. Between the historic house and the addition, the big addition. I also wonder if the roof of the addition should come down.
It is a different material.
Okay.
I had some thoughts on the connector. Also, the, there was an addition put on the historic house previously. But the addition only extends, it's only essentially on the ground, ground level. So if. You know, I, I agree that the connector seems to be, you know, not necessarily compliant with the RE nineteen B five. That was reduced to a one-story connector that would enable at least part of the historic material on the upper. Level of the south facade to be preserved. And maybe that, there's a historic window there as well. So. I think it'll also, so along those lines, RE nineteen A four. It says an addition or alteration should be reversible such that a future owner may restore the building to its historic condition. And RE nineteen A five additions or alterations that would result in downgrading a historic. Buildings rating are inappropriate, which I'm not saying this necessarily would, but. I think reducing the height of that connector to one story would enable, you know, potentially. Someone in the future to, to reverse. The damage that otherwise would occur from the connector.
All right, while we're on number one, let's just go down the line and finish number one, because that's the main issue here, whether we're going to continue or not.
Well, specifically to the connector, yes, as an applicant and as a board member. I can think of numerous times where single-story connectors haven't been allowed, and we've, we've only allowed a below-grade connector. To preserve material and whatnot. Now, in this case, there is no historic material on the, let's call it on the first story of a, of a connector. But for me, it is that second story, and it's the width of it. It's not a, it's barely even a connector. It's livable space. It's got a dining room table on that level. You know, it's a dining room. It's not so much a connector, it's a room.
But it connects the stairs.
I understand, but it's, it's, it's so substantial. In, in plan and in to being two stories. So it needs to at least, as Matt said, narrow up. Substantially, as in, in the order of feet, not inches. And, and in a, not to bring up another issue, but the, the, the roof, the shed roof above the door. Between, I think it's gridlines two and three. The way it wraps the corner. I, I don't, I don't care for that. Well, it's not that I don't.
The shed.
Sorry, let me start over. I think it obscures the historic corner. Which I don't think is a key.
Of the secondary structure.
No, it obscures the corner of the historic house.
Talking the, we're.
So.
Secondary entry.
Sorry, I had moved on to the conditions so I could read them. It's in, it's on. One point four, the, well, that's the next building height. Let's look at the elevation.
Let me ask you, Stacy, do you think? What if it just moved, you know, stepped back from the corner by a foot, made a notch? Or do you think it needs to holistically move away from the?
Well, without turning into a designer, which I'm not supposed to do, there's also a problem here with drainage and a cricket and all kinds of stuff going on there, but. If this. There's so many solutions, right? I'm not trying to come up with solutions, but. If that roof simply sloped the other direction, it would need to extend past the corner. That's one, that's maybe the easiest.
Saw that too, yeah.
Okay. Number one. Listen, comments on condition one, height, width, connector?
Yes.
Agreed.
We need to work on that. They need to work on that. Yes.
In agreement with Matt.
Tell you what, I was there in the room with these two guys when we changed this deliberately to encourage. One story, if not underground, as Stacy said. But. At sixty-eight inches, and I, I always hearken back to the second tier of interior guidelines and say, what will the passerby see? And it's far enough sixty-some feet back, and if they narrowed it up. I, I think. I could support that. But it's going to have to be feet, as Stacy said, and unfortunately, they're not going to be a dining room. But that's not our purview to worry about.
Well, and I, we're blind to use, we're supposed to be blind to the interior use of the space, so that's fine, but.
So far back, if it was narrower and you didn't see it, that's what I'm worried about.
I, I, I don't know how you could do this with a one-story connector.
Well, and that's. Again, that's a concession for the narrowness of the historic structure. In a way, sorry. In a way, this is being differential to the historic structure by, by really not trying to join on the east side, where the majority of the lot, available lot coverage is. So I'm willing to give on the two stories, but I think we're going in the same direction. It needs to be. Reduced in. Mass.
Could, could I ask the applicant, Chris, could you bring up sheet A one point four one? You have your three D views.
Yes, and Bob, I can't hear you when you speak.
Oh, sorry.
A one four one?
Which one was that?
A one four one.
Mark, Kristen has a question. Are we in deliberations currently or?
Yep, no, we're just, we're not, we are in deliberations. We're not asking her to comment. We're asking her to put this on the screen. A one four one, please. I think it'll help the deliberation.
Asking just because I almost want you to come out of deliberations because I have a few comments I'd love to.
We're not going to have any dialogue.
Okay.
I just want to see the drawing or he does.
We could.
No, it was so that I could provide comments. I was just asking if you're going back.
Okay.
I have the page, Chris, if you want me to share.
It's, it's up, isn't it?
Well, it was, it just went away.
I'd like to look at two of those lower views. The first one on the left that, that should be the eastern side is the least problematic and the one on the west.
Are you there now? Can you see it?
No.
You have four point one up.
A four point one?
Four point, the, the three D views.
A one point four one. We just had it and it went away. Well, Matt, while she's pulling it up, I'll have it open, I think, to that drawing.
I think.
What are you seeing?
Maybe the debate I'm having internally is, is asking Chris to move that connector in both sides. Is it a foot on each side? Is it two feet? What's the appropriate amount that you wouldn't see it? From the pedestrian way.
I think she needs to move it so we can see it because I can't tell. I mean, I, I don't think we could reside on how many inches that, but it's, it's more than a foot, I think. I mean, it's the same width, but.
Can we chat about this or?
No, no, I'm sorry. Well, actually.
I, I mean, if we open this back up, I can tell you what we could.
Hang, hang on a minute. I'm trying to remember, did we?
Essentially do with condition one.
Just a moment, Chris, did we discuss the connector with her?
We had no questions about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna allow just reopen it up and then we'll hear from the public, which is none.
Further comments as well if you reopen.
Oh, okay, but Chris, go ahead, but please be brief on, I mean, we're leaning towards.
I'll be really brief. I do think if you want to bring in this connector two feet, which would probably really lower. That roof down and do the minimum. When I say that, maybe having. You know, a much lower plate height there. I do agree with Stacy on switching this roof here and taking it out. Originally, we, this is going to be our access point from the alley. So we were trying to. Move the snowshed away from this. And not having to require a cricket and. You know, I can talk to the owner, but I think, you know, if this wants a slight reduction on the deck. Then maybe everyone would be happy with condition one.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go to public comment. And if there is none, we'll hear from staff. Go ahead.
Sure. I just wanted to reemphasize the historic significance of this contributing primary structure and the alley structure. I think. That it, you know, this flexibility in terms of going above one story for a connector, this may not be. A case where you want to consider that because we're losing historic fabric. You can look at what they plan to eliminate by making this a two-story connector. It's very clear in the design guidelines that it should be below grade or one story, and staff are very concerned about. How significant these two structures are historically. This property is individually eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, as my colleague Darren stated, and concern about going too far. With what is being proposed such that we lose our rating for these two structures. So I think. Thinking about that connector very carefully as you make your determination, and also going back to that. Deck that is so close to the contributing shed on the alley, is that deck necessary? Staff would, would suggest no. So that there is that separation between that contributing structure and the large. Addition in the center that really isn't subordinate per staff's opinion to the primary structure. So. I just wanted to reemphasize that before. We go back to deliberations since we had the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me.
I do have some more comments on condition one, if you were getting ready to.
Closing public comment then?
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. And well, we, we closed public comment and ended with staff, so we are now moving on. But please start it off. With other comments.
Yeah, so relating to the. The proposed addition, I do think that it is not visibly subordinate. It seems like the roof form obscures the existing view. Um, it seems like the roof form, uh, obscures the existing views to natural resources as per, uh, if you look at H R. Um, figure four, this is exactly, this form is exactly the no example. As far as, um.
What page is that on?
Uh, let's see. Four. Uh, that is page fifty-eight.
Here it says no.
Yeah.
N O.
Right. No. So I think, um, from that perspective, um, the roof form does obscure existing views. I think that's, um. H R seven A, where you want to, uh, be preserving view corridors. Specifically position a new building or addition so that view corridors are preserved. Um, so I do have concerns with, um.
Sure, I will, I will say that diagram is, is applicable to policy seven views. Not, uh, the, the discussion of subordinates.
Right. Also, okay, so with respect to the subordinates, so the ridge line of the addition is. Essentially, what was it, point eight inches below, uh, the roof line of the historic structure? Uh, and so it does sort of, it does look, look as though that addition kind of looms behind. Um, or is part of the historic structure.
Well, I, I think everybody said they agreed with Darren's comments on this, so that means the width has to come in. I think we're unanimous.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're ready to specify it yet, but it's, it's, um, I think the only thing left in number one to straw poll is the connector and. Uh, again, you know, I helped write that. If it wasn't sixty-some foot back and it wasn't sixty-eight inches long. And it was reduced by three feet in width, just to use a number. You're not gonna see it from the street and only, isn't it only, the, the first floor didn't have a, uh, wasn't it, the historic materials were gone on the first floor, weren't they? So now we're talking about a very small area. So that's the only reason I might make an exception to what, what we said, or what we, but, um, but I'll go with the majority.
You're saying, you, you're saying the second floor connector is okay.
I, I'm not necessarily okay, but I'm saying I could support if it, it was significantly narrower. And it's sixty-eight inches long and meeting over sixty-some feet from the street. I don't think we're gonna see it and that's always the litmus test. What does the passerby see?
It, it, it does, it necessitates the loss of historic siding. On the second level, it necessitates the loss of a historic window, or at least.
The opening.
What may be a historic opening. It, there's some problems and, and, and in addition, the, the, uh, just say the condition references one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Policies. So. You know, I'm, I'm a big one for substantially compliant, not completely, but seven, that's a lot of policies.
Yeah, I think I also, um, as far as, and you know, forgive me, you guys for, uh. Uh, you know, my, my process here basically has to be just because I don't have the history that you guys have that, um, really. You know, uh, my process is reviewing the applica, the application, but also reading every single policy. In the book. Um, so one that I think also substantially, um, it doesn't comply with is that the proposed addition doesn't step down in scale. From the historic primary structure. Um, so in H R eighteen and both the intro and in section A two. Um, that appears to be a pretty strong requirement that there is a step down in scale. Um, which I'm not seeing really in this, this addition at all.
Well, what we do know is we cannot approve something that's, what is this, four or five feet? Both ways beyond and with the historic structure. We, we can't have this, these wings out here. I, I mean, that's just nothing, I, I don't think there's any way to take exception. To the guidelines supporting that. And so I don't know if we wanna tell them how many feet. Normally we don't at the first continuance. Or the second one, but I agree the heights at the meeting, I had my notes in the last meeting where we said a minimum of verbally, but it didn't. We didn't put it in there on reducing the height, a minimum of two feet and that took it down to a seven-foot plate height. At two feet and there's a whole lot of additions that only have seven, I mean, six feet plate heights. So I'm, I'm all for the condition as written and I'm just unsure. I, I just wanna be solid where we are on the connector. So.
I would say the connector where I'm leaning towards is allowing the second story, but, um. Requiring that Chris move the walls, the connector walls in so that you cannot see it from any vantage point from the street. And I don't, I don't know if that's a eighteen inches on both sides or two feet on both sides. I don't necessarily wanna give her a number right now.
Okay, and are we gonna, are we gonna interpret the guidelines to allow this going out more than two or three feet? And we don't have to necessarily specify on each side of this historic house, even though the argument is always that it's further back. To have these two wings, I mean, maybe we just leave the condition the same, but I, I want the guy, I want the applicant to hear so we don't have to redraw it three times.
Mark, I am not as concerned with that. It's, it's such a narrow house. The historic house is so narrow. To, to restrain them, or restrain the project to the width of that, of such a narrow house is. Is, is really encumbering.
I know it's encumbering, but the word subordinate is, means what it says and, and.
But oftentimes, just, sorry, this is very dialog-y, but oftentimes we have, we have, we. Additions that are taller, we talk about it subordinate because it's further back.
Yeah.
Well, in this case, it's, it is shorter. We can argue whether it's short enough or shorter, shorter enough, but it is shorter. The, the give this time is that it's wider.
Yeah.
But it's further back, so it's kind of.
But I'd rather give if it's a little taller further back than have the width, because to me, the eye from the street, you, I mean, you just can't get around seeing this extra width in the back. But again, I think we all agree with condition number one. We gotta take a straw poll here on the connector, so what's on the table is one-story connector. Um, as Kristen pointed out, I don't, there's not significant lost materials considering the second feet floor, but. If they brought it in a couple of feet narrower, and I think that the condition could read such that it's not visible from the street. Those are the two things. So I think, Sherry, you're for one story?
Definitely for one story.
Stacy?
I'm for one story, but I wouldn't put the word definitely in front of it.
What do you mean you wouldn't put the word definitely in front of it?
The guideline says, says one, but we often come up with reasons why we will give, will give some.
So where are you on this project?
I would prefer one.
Okay.
First, different, the different, the definitely.
Matt?
Um, for this particular project, I think, um, two-story, I would be fine seeing as two-story as long as you could not see the connector from the public way. Street.
I agree with Matt. Do you prefer?
Make sure you're talking to your microphone.
I normally speak pretty loud.
Then that thing.
I, I think I could be okay with, uh, how Matt just presented that.
Okay, Eliza.
Well, I would say as long as you don't lose our, um. The historical significance, because if, if we deal with a two-story, then that's a no, then we need to go back to the one.
I don't think that would necessarily trigger loss of its status, but.
Yeah, so.
They wrote this guideline.
So is.
The thing is that I, we did.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
But I just had a thought come in my mind is if that we do agree to this and we do see this comeback as a second-story connector. And then we're all like, it still doesn't look good. And then now we tell them to go change it again.
We, we, we may decide, rather than continue to get, we may decide to change it and say that's a condition, or we may have to see it a third time.
Yeah.
I don't know, we wanna get it right.
Yeah.
That's why we take a straw poll.
We just did.
And two, one in the pole. Right? That's three.
Yeah. Okay. I was wishy-washy, so. All right, well, I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna go on the record. If this thing was eight or ten feet long, I wouldn't even be thinking of this conversation. But sixty-eight inches seems to be somewhat of a mitigating factor, but you know what? Um, I may, after we see this, like Matt, I wanna see it a couple of feet narrower. I may come back. I just wanna go on the record and say. No, no way. It's gotta be one story. So I, I just wanna, I wanna see it and we'll give it a try. So do you wanna separate that out or include that language about significantly narrowing the connector? In, in number one and keep it all together? All the same.
I think it's in there. I think what Darren has is appropriate and.
Okay, and she's.
Talked enough.
They've heard, okay, so now through six, um. Do we all agree? And although I've heard some sentiment on number five to maybe try to save the western cottonwood?
Maybe we should talk about that.
Talk about five. So she's saving one and there was some discussion of could we save the, the second one?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's A, B, C. C is the one in the far corner. D is the one that's fur- further south on the lot, closer to the house.
I, I think the one closer to the neighbor's house should be removed. These limbs are starting to fall and.
That's the one that they said was be one that was best condition.
Oh, really? The one the closest to their house?
I believe, number two. For C, can you pull that up?
The westernmost.
I'll pull up.
Westernmost is the ones.
The, uh. Arbor.
Fourth west corner.
It's in the set.
Mm-hmm.
I was like page fifteen, sixty-seven.
Darren, didn't you mean the one in the northwest corner? The westernmost? I thought so, yeah. Well, what about the other tree? That, somebody wanted to re-discuss the second tree. No? Okay, then we leave it as written? Is it okay?
That's what I would do.
All right.
Yeah, the one that's closer was considered not. A, B, and D were the ones that, uh. Uh, were recommended to be taken down.
And we wanted to do number seven, and what do we wanna do? Uh, Kristen had actually commented, which I appreciated, eliminating it. But I heard some comments about.
Eliminating.
Reducing it. Is it, is it breaks the plane over to the?
What are we talking about?
Balcony.
The balcony?
The balcony.
Sorry, the rear deck there. I mean, it, you look at A four, five, which you can look on your own packet, we don't have to call it up. I mean, it's. I don't think it should stay like, I don't think the guidelines would support having this handle lever in the space over this secondary structure. And over the alley structure. So, uh, what, what, what should we do with this deck? The guidelines suggest here.
Personally, I think that, um, well, I don't think that. The guidelines would, uh, support removal. Um, H R thirteen C, uh, the, the decks, balconies, patios and porches should not significantly encroach. Into the yards, I think supports that. It's already such a narrow, six foot nine separation between the two buildings. And this makes it essentially a, um.
I think it's.
Zero or negative.
Most of it's covered with a roof.
I think it's talking about side yards, front yards and backyard setbacks, so not between the open space in between structures.
Yeah, I couldn't really find, um.
My interpretation of it. Is it yours, Bob?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. I hadn't thought about it. In this particular case, because it is so narrow, it's essentially that, that space is roofed over. It's not. Doesn't feel like open space at all.
Yeah.
We, and we've softened on the fifteen-foot requirement, but then this. Kind of does away with it, or not completely, but it roofs it, it roofs it over.
Going from fifteen feet to six foot nine, I could support that, that there's no deck.
Then the other option is to increase the space between the buildings. That's what, like having your deck there.
And then we push it over to the alley further, right? The, the second or the.
Well, the secondary is where it is. It's.
Well, yeah.
That's a historic building in itself, in its location.
We have a guideline that specifically referred, well, I guess, uh, open space or view quarters would, number seven would, policy views would. Would probably.
Be open space that we would, or masting is what we would try to reference. So, so we're, we're saying that, um. Since the board is willing to have the reduced almost seven feet instead of the minimum six or, or, or a, um, suggested fifteen. That the caveat to that is this deck is eliminated, so it's creating more obvious open space in between the two. Smashing.
I can support that. Let's do a straw poll. Sherry, whistle it down to the innocent. Where are you?
I support eliminating the deck.
Okay.
I support reducing the deck in size.
Um, I support eliminating the deck after hearing the discussion.
I'm gonna have to sport elimination.
Elimination.
Andrew and Eliza?
I'm gonna quote, um, policy twenty-one, building components, policy, uh, twenty-one of historic, um. H R. Uh, A says building components should be similarly scaled to those used historically, decks in rear yards. Maybe larger if in proportion to the site and structure. I think that they just need to work with proportion. And propose something that's in proportion, proportion to. To the site.
Okay, so you're reduce.
I'm reduce.
Andrew was.
Policy. Get on board with that. Reduce.
Reduce? And you were eliminate, that's two, eliminate, 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 eliminate. And where were you?
Reduce.
So I guess it's eliminated. In return for. Six foot nine to fifteen feet leniency on the setback, so I'm, I'm sorry for the functionality of it, but it's.
So that'll end up affecting the doors there. That'll, those will turn into windows and those are nuances that we'll get into.
Okay, so that would be number seven. And the two relevant. Um. Conditions or H, or guidelines of the H R thirteen. C and. And H R twenty-one. And.
Can I bring up the hot tub location?
Yeah.
So the hot tub, um, the proposal has the hot tub located in the western side yard, uh, directly adjacent to the western facade. Um. It doesn't appear to be appropriate in that highly visible portion of the site. I think there's some policies that, uh, sort of support that. Uh, H R policy two, natural resources intro, uh, new projects should respect and enhance the setting's natural resources. Dot, dot, dot landscaping should accommodate the features known, historically known on a site, uh, which I don't think hot tubs were. Probably abundant in the period of significance. I could be wrong, but, uh, anyway, and also, uh, H R policy thirteen setbacks, the intro. Uh, the rhythm created by the placement of buildings and side yards are an especially important feature. Uh, this historic development pattern contributes to the visual continuity of the neighborhood. So that kind of goes toward preserving the side yard as a, um, open space, uh, that doesn't necessarily include, um, hot tub. Um, and also H R twenty A architectural character, uh, respect the sense of time and place in all projects. So, uh, it appears that the hot tub, um, in this location, uh, it wasn't a historic. Feature, uh, in contradiction to H R two, um, the patio and hot tub sort of interrupt the rhythm of the building side yard. Um, uh, historic, um, pattern, uh, in contradiction to H R thirteen. And the hot tub does not respect the sense of time and place, uh, in contradiction to H R twenty A. Uh, so I would propose, um, a condition that the hot tub be removed or moved to a location where, um. Uh, it's not, uh, visible in that side yard.
Uh, I'll say that the hot tub could, so they do have a couple. I'll say that the hot tub could, so they do have a couple, three bristlecone pine trees in front of it. I do agree that it could be obscured more. I don't think the right approach is to build the site walls up with the hot tub could be sunken down into the patio.
It's interval, it's lower than the floor level.
Yeah, but it's, it's higher than the stone wall surrounding it. You see it here.
Well, yeah, because typically you don't want to have to get down on all fours to get in the hot tub.
I will say, I'm not, just because miners didn't have hot tubs, it doesn't mean we can't have hot tubs. I'm not gonna go as, as far as Sherry. I think it's low. It's below this, the, the coping or the, sorry, what's the technical term? It's not coping. It's the.
With the base, stone base of.
The stone base. It is by, by virtue of the site. More or less at this, the top of the hot tub is more or less at the level of, let's say, the sidewalk. A couple strategically placed bushes and you won't even know it's there. And, and, and I'm sorry, it's, I don't think any section related to natural resources is applicable. Simply because it's not a natural resource. I, again, I think that's, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Well, it's troublesome that it's right up by the historic house. What, what if we gave them a choice of like, I don't know, sinking it further or, or actually flip flopping and making it, you know, further back and have the, their patio actually be closer to the historic house and the hot tub would not be. That mitigate the.
I, I think that the, between vegetation, landscape walls, possibly sinking it, they could obscure it from the public view. And I think that would be fine. And I think additional landscaping here will further you obscure the addition in the back. So I think, I think Sherry's probably right to bring it up, and I think there's ways to mitigate it without having, requiring that it be moved somewhere else on the.
Well, if we, if we just had a, I think we should have a condition, but if it's obscure, make sure it's obscured from public view for these conditions. Then they can decide whether relocate it, sink it, um, show us a bunch of vegetation, what, whatever the means and methods would be. So, everybody okay with that?
With obscuring it, yes.
Yes.
All right, well, we're gonna have, that's number eight. Thanks, Sherry.
There, there's not a dimension on it, but it's twen, it's almost thirty feet. From the sidewalk, or from the prop, front property line, much less the sidewalk. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, the site kind of sinks in now. I think when you're in the sidewalk, you're sort of elevated.
You want to say obscure or relocate or just obscure?
You have the option.
Or.
Sorry?
They give an option. Your or, okay.
Okay. All right, is that it? Eight conditions?
You're fine with that.
You ready, Matt? You just said you were fine with that.
I didn't write any of this stuff down to make the. I think you're gonna.
Oh, Piper made a request. Um, we're gonna just reverse course just a bit in that we've, our habit has been that we had, um, a motion and a second, and then we did our friendly amendments afterwards. We were talking before the meeting. Roberts rules would prefer that we clear out either, either friendly amendments or new conditions before we get the second. So we'll go back to that. We used to do it that way. I don't know what happened. But just a little procedural thing. So, um, we'll try to get everything finished and then we'll ask for a second.
We did use to do it that way, and I thought we changed because we were supposed to have a second.
So, once you second a motion, it has to stay and be voted on, right? So you can, it, it's preferable to use a friendly amendment after a second to correct a word or a condition number that's already been stated, not to add a new condition.
Okay, two different animals.
It's preferable to have all of your conditions stated and everybody agrees before there's a second. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We did it that way for quite some time, and then we switched back to the way that you guys were doing it several.
But I thought somebody, I remember somebody guiding us that way.
And we were guided that way.
No, I don't think it's material.
Well, however you want to do it, I'll keep the minutes for it.
A third option, and I thought we talked about this maybe a couple of meetings ago too, was to go ahead and state your conditions right now before a motion is made. That way you know exactly and everyone knows what's coming. And then if you are missing anything, that's when they can correct it. You'll have it down in writing in front of you before the motion's even made. That way there are no friendly amendments needed.
I'm just thinking that might lengthen our meetings a bit, but.
We were doing it for a little while earlier last year and it was working great, but however I stand on my point that an amendment is to correct something that's already been stated, not to add a new condition.
Okay, but friendly amendments after the second are just fine.
Yeah, if you want to do it.
And we'll call those more clarifications, not new conditions? Is that what you want to call friendly? What's friendly mean?
There's technically no such thing as a friendly amendment.
All right.
Hillary, I'd been doing it for a long time. I mean, I don't want to.
Okay.
I think it's best to state the conditions before we. Friendly amendments should just be for corrections and not for.
All right, but we'll do the friendly amendment after the second.
Or, or not have a friendly.
You want the friendly amendment and or correction after the second?
Before.
Gonna be, why would you need to amend it after it's been a motion second?
It, 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 it might just be some final thought that somebody had and forgot to bring it up. I mean, we, you know, people. Okay, so we'll try that. So, but, but to the point of Ali and everybody else, um, I think we've got one through six is written, and then we have seven is the elimination of the deck. We don't have to say in return for, you know, the setback. But that's H R thirteen C and H R twenty one, and then eight is relocate or and or obscure the hot tub per H R two, H R thirteen, and H R twenty A. And H R twenty one, actually. So who wants to do this?
You got it written.
I was reading it so somebody else would do it. All right, let's, here we go.
You want to hand it to me if I can read your writing?
I, I'll get it over. It, it, it's, I don't normally make many per year. I bet less than five, but significant, uh, okay, I will move to continue to the March eighteenth Hark meeting, the proposed small scale application at five sixty eight West Columbia, based on the findings, the staff memo dated, uh, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty six, the following conditions. One through six as written with or am I gonna put the, the, the narrower? I guess we. It's part of one, and then she heard the dialogue, so she, she, she'll do it. Seven, eliminate the rear deck per H R thirteen C and H R twenty one. Eight, uh, relocate and or obscure the hot tub per H R two, H R thirteen, H R twenty eight, H R twenty one. And this motion is based on evidence testimony provided at the public hearing held on January twenty first, twenty, two thousand and twenty six. No such hearings provided by the Taylor Land use code. Do we have a second?
Matt will second.
Matt's second. Any friendly amendments?
I have one. To number eight. I thought we said consider relocating the hot tub.
Oh, I thought we said we'd given their choice, obscure or relocate and or relocate.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Obscure and or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I rescind my friendly amendment.
Well, I, I, I take it as a friendly comment. All right, Stacy, let's vote.
Stacy, yes. Matt, yes.
Mark is.
Bob, yes.
Andrew, yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Darren, and well, we need to get a motion on this next one to continue.
Yes.
Who would like to do that? Jerry would, oh, you know, we, anybody can make a motion. Is it her turn?
Wait, what was the next thing?
Uh, just on the agenda to, um, in you, uh, number two, uh, the request was to continue, actually. There's not language written, but, but be to continue this project.
Without discussion.
Without discussion to the May twentieth meeting.
Would have to be recused from that one.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Cause I'm the listing broker on it.
Okay, thank you. Well, you want to go in the room?
Oh.
This, nah, can you just go ahead and leave? If we forget to.
He can be, if we're just continuing it, he can be present, but please don't vote.
Listen, I'm, they're fresh in my mind now, Ali.
Two fourteen, two fourteen South Pur, I work for the applicant.
Okay, so you're recued.
Yes.
Well, this might be a tight vote.
Well, this is what we ran into.
Okay. So the, the motion would be, you don't have to deter, but if you want to just get on the record.
Give it a try.
Yeah. Let's get on the record.
All right, I moved to continue to May twentieth, twenty twenty six. Uh, Hark meeting, the proposed certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness amendment number two uh, for project two fourteen South Pur. Based on findings in the staff memo dated July twenty first, twenty twenty six with the, oh, no conditions.
Without discussion.
Without discussion. This motion is based on evidence and no discussion. You don't have to do that part?
Matt will second.
I don't believe there was a staff memo.
Yeah, no. Can you state your motion in a complete?
Oh, no, just no, many to staff memo part, because we don't have one, just without discussion.
Yeah, when you say continue, you say continue without discussion to date certain, that date there, May twentieth.
Okay, so I moved to continue without discussion to uh, the May twentieth, twenty twenty six Hark meeting, the proposed, uh, certificate of appropriateness amendment number two for project two fourteen South Pur.
Very good. Matt will second. Okay, Sherry, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Matt, yes. Mark, yes?
Bob, yes.
Elita, yes.
Very good. Ananmas. Any further discussion? So I'm sorry, we went past eight o'clock for lots of reasons. Anyway, plus I lost the best. So we'll adjourn the meeting at eight, ten P M, and thank you very much. Uh, happy new year, and let's hope it's a wonderful collaborative year at Hark. We're off mic.